Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing in honor of our soldiers past and present. That we customarily do at every meeting, however, today or tonight, given that it is the 23rd anniversary of September 11th, I'd ask that we also remember all the souls that we lost on that day. I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media. And I'd also like to announce that the next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals will be Wednesday, September 25th of 2024. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, we have a special permit case, which is ZSB 24-7. The petitioner is S&amp;M Almeida Property LLC. It's a continued case. Unfortunately, it's a case that I cannot sit on as I do have a conflict. So we are going to take a brief recess so that we can rearrange our board, as they've already started the commencement of this case and they heard and they already opened the public meeting. So at this point in time, we're just going to take a quick recess so we can rearrange the board.
Good evening, and the zoning board of appeals back in session as Attorney Maderas, the chairman, indicated that he has a conflict with this first case, a IEB chair in the meeting, I am the vice chair, Halim Chuba. So our first case on tonight's hearing is special permit ZSB 24-7, and this is a continued hearing from August 21st, 2024. The petition petitioner applicant is S&amp;M Almeida Property LLC, who is also the owner. The subject property is located at 1402 Tucker Road, map 167 lot 95. It's in the general business district and also it's in the aquifer three overlay district. This case was advertised on June 6th, 2024 and June 13th, 2024. We did open a public hearing and we did read all the public comments. This is a continued hearing, so we won't be reading any of the public comments. At the last meeting, the reason we continued this hearing is we wanted the applicant to submit a, I believe, a maintenance plan for the stormwater management system that was on the, on the plans, as we had concern about because the, the property is located within the aquifer protection overlay district and the applicant seeks a special permit to increase the lot coverage from 30.9 to 43.2. And since I think we did, I believe, we did get the, the operation and maintenance plan, we have a copy of it here, and this is going to be part of the plans that were submitted on records and will be part of the conditions on the permit. At this time, I just asked the board members if they have any questions for the applicant or any comments on what was submitted on the plans.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing as well. We did, he did submit what we needed, what we asked for. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to voice their opinion either in, in support or in opposition of this case? Please come to the podium and let us know. Again, as I stated before, this is already continuation of a public hearing, that we opened that public hearing and we had two public hearings on this case. Attorney McVeigh, do you have any questions or any for the board at this time? If not, we can probably continue.
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, so I think we'll keep the public portion of the meeting open just in case we have to communicate with Attorney McVeigh, but we did, we do have some findings and we would like to go over and discuss. So the findings, so if we look at the, the first page, the number one, the subject property is located at 1420 Tucker Road and is also known as Assessors Map 167 lot 95. The subject property is located in the general business district and the aquifer protection overlay zoning district. The subject property is improved with an existing commercial building and an existing bond in the rear of the property and has been owned by the petitioner since 2020. The petitioner seeks relief from Dartmouth zoning by law, Article 28, Section 375-28-5B8, prohibited uses lot coverage above 10% of lot coverage above, or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot whichever is greater. The existing impervious cover, cover on the subject property is 30.9 and will be increased to 43.2. Petitioner is also seeking to nullify condition, condition number four of a previously issued special permit, and we reference the book and page number as amended, the book 79, 42, page 139, page 139, in order to use the existing bond for a yoga studio office space. So if you remember, there was a special permit that was issued for this property and specifically there was a condition number four that says you cannot use the bond for anything basically, except for additional use for the, for the office that was on that, or the other building that was on the property. So he seeks to use the bond as an office slash yoga and also increase the parking lot, which in terms increased the lot coverage from 30.9 to 43.2. He submitted all the stormwater calculations and, and plans that he's, that he needs to comply with the, with stormwater mitigation in the, in the aquifer. This one here, I just wanted to add, just in the finding and Attorney McVeigh, I believe that you need to seek a site plan review from the planning board for this, correct? Yes, so I, yeah, I just want to add that planning board site plan review is required for the proposed site modification. That would be another finding on the, on the finding. The board finds that the additional impervious lot coverage and the ability to use the bond for the requested applications will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and is not and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning by law. Stop me anytime if you have anything to add or to change or correct, thank you. So now, this is the finding, we go to the, to the condition portion of, of the, of this decision, and it says, "The petitioner and/or subsequent owner will secure all the necessary approval and permit from all applicable boards and agencies prior to issuance of a building permit. The petitioner and/or any subsequent owner is limited to an increase in the impervious cover not to exceed 43.2." And this is what we are approving. "The petitioner or subsequent owner must submit an annual inspection report to the zoning enforcement officer on the stormwater management system prepared by a licensed professional engineer." And if you remember, that was a condition on the previous special permit, but unfortunately the old owner never complied.
Right.
"The petitioner and/or subsequent owner must adhere to the operations and maintenance plan and its corresponding BMP location plan prepared by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC for S&amp;M Almeida Property LLC attached herein. The board approved plan of reference. We reference the plans prepared by Zenith Consulting Engineers dated March 18, 2024, revised April 25, 2024." And also the architectural plans revised April 25, 2024. Is there anything that you think we missed or we need to add or we, I think we covered it all, but...
No, I think, I think that our main concern, at least my main concern, was that the previous decisions didn't want, specifically said, "Don't use the barn," and I think that concern was based on runoff and the potential for drainage in the area where the property is located, but I think they've covered that in their documentation that they presented.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. I think everything is in good shape.
Dr. Agay, any, okay.
But anything that we take off and something new we have to put, I'm always concerned about previous material that has been used hazardous waste impossible in the, in the building. How could we possibly add to it without any insult with anybody else's, any other?
Dr. Agay, that's not our jurisdiction. It's under the building department, but the building departments, they do require if there's any demolition that the contractor or the owner will have to submit, do like an asbestos review and submit reports and do all that stuff. That's, that's basic and, and code requirements in the state of Massachusetts and they have to comply with that. So we don't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think at this time, we're, I have a...
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
For case, special permit ZSB 24-7.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
All in favor, yeah.
Aye.
Stay there.
Aye.
We close the public hearing, right?
We need to, your vote, we made, you made the motion?
Yes, I vote yes.
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye, okay, aye.
I make a motion that... The approval? I make a motion that we approve special permit ZSB-24-7 for 1420 Tucker Road with the stated facts and conditions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we continue our public hearing and the next hearing is ZAV 24-10. At this time, I think we take a few minutes recess so we can change our seating as Chairman Maderas will be back in his seat.
Back on the record, the next matter on the agenda for tonight's meeting is a continued case. It is use variance ZAV 24-10. The petitioner is Peter Bullard Esquire. The owner is Raymond Rose Senior Trustee, and the subject property is 411 Fons Corner Road, map 63 lot 12. We've already read the legal advertisement and the publication. We've waived the public, the reading of the abutters list, and we've already opened the meeting on this. And this is a continued case for a variance. I believe that this was one in which we had suggested that some of the relief that they were seeking could be done by special permit. So we could open up both cases, or you want to just proceed with this one at this point?
Proceed with the, with the variance.
The variance, okay, so that's fine.
Discuss what we need on that variance.
Okay, we can do that. So at this point in time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner. Actually, there's a letter. There's a letter here that I need to read into the record. I've already read some into the record, but I'm going to read another letter that was a result of some of the conversations that we were having with the petitioner, representative when he was here last. The letter is from the building inspector dated August 1st, 2024. It says, "Please be advised that I have reviewed the information submitted to this office. It is my opinion that proposed project does not qualify for special permit as was discussed in the meeting on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024. The current property has a Class II license to sell used cars. The new proposed use will be a Class I license to sell new and used cars. I agree with the point that it is still valid per town bylaws until the end of 2024 if the proposed use was staying the same. C, discontinuance of nonconforming use, when a nonconforming use or portion thereof has been discontinued for a period of two or more years, said use should not be reestablished and future use of the property shall be in conformity with these bylaws. The new project does not seek to expand the nonconforming structure. They are proposing a demo and construction of a new nonconforming structure and does not meet the specific requirements of 375-6.2C2 to follow the special permit. Two, when the expansion or alteration of such a structure cannot conform with the development standards for structure in the zoning district in which the structure is located, the structure may be extended or altered only by special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals shall not issue a special permit unless the board finds that the extension is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. The parking variances are required for only setbacks in size, not for number of spaces. That is a planning board decision. At the time of the denial letter, I did not have the specific information as to what the extent or number of variances were required. This is the reason for variance required." I am requiring, excuse me, I am viewing this as a completely new project with a new use that is not allowed in a limited industrial district and therefore does not fall on the special permit. Based upon my interpretation of the town bylaws and the scope of work associated with this project, it is my opinion that a use variance is required." And it was Randy Bassett, Chief Building Officer, dated August 1st, 2024. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner's representative to come forth and provide any further explanation on the issues. But before I have you come, you can come to the podium, but before you speak, are there any other comments or any other letters that have come about since the last time Mr. Attorney Bullard came before us?
No.
Okay. Except the plans, oh, the new plans, yes, I saw those, okay. Yeah, they're, well, I'm sure he's going to explain some of the changes on that new plan, because I think the square footage changed, is that correct?
Yes, the previous addition was 39 and it's really only 35,000 square feet.
That's right, okay.
So my name's Attorney Peter Bullard, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. You summed up what happened on July 24th perfectly. My take on it is at the hearing on July 24th, there was some discussion as to what was needed, and I think that the consensus was that a variance was needed for the setbacks on the parking. So I think everybody is in agreement on that. There is some disagreement perhaps on whether or not a use, use variance is required, and you just read Randy Bassett's opinion dated August 1st, and he's quite sure that a use variance is required for the reasons stated in his letter. And, and the, the prior zoning enforcement officer had indicated that it was a kind of a preexisting, an extension of a preexisting use, and so his opinion was that only a special permit would be required. So as you mentioned on the July 24th hearing, you know, lawyers can look at two fact patterns and reach different conclusions, and my experience in this case is that two very knowledgeable zoning enforcement officers can look at the same fact pattern and reach different conclusions. My client just wants to work with the town to proceed to get this done. So, you know, if you tell me to jump, I'm going to say how high. So, you know, we're prepared to proceed on either, either front. As I said, I do think that the consensus at the last meeting was that clearly a variance is required for the setback on parking. I did submit, and again, Michelle has been extremely helpful, I submitted two letters from the engineers. Mr. Chairman, I think you wanted a kind of an outline in terms of what kind of...
Those are very helpful.
Yeah, so, and I thought the engineer did a...
They assisted me in putting together a proposed decision...
Right, so...
...that we, that I just suggest and put forth to the members and they can, we can review them and decide.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we still have to hammer out the, the next issue, and I agree with you that we definitely, you're definitely going to require a variance for those three concerns, which is the perimeter, the front, the side, and also the building setbacks.
Yep.
That, I think we're all in agreement with that, that they're going to, they're going to require those, so...
The building setback?
Well, it's parking from the building.
Right, parking.
That's parking, what it is, is parking setback from the building.
Right, but it's parking.
But they refer to it as building, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we're in agreement that that's required.
Yeah.
So at this point in time, what I'm going to do, given it's a public hearing on this one, before I open up the next one, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or against this petition. This is for 411 Fons Corner Road. It's for the proposed construction of a car dealership on, on this property. There's a place there now, it's called Rose, yes?
For the record, Steve Giosa, semi-retired but working with site tech engineering and environmental consultants. I'm here tonight representing the direct southerly abutter to this project. That would be Assessors Map 63, lots 13 and 14. So immediately to the south of this site between basically the Rose property and the Vanity Fair outlet. Similar shaped property, longs...
Who owns that?
I'm sorry?
Who owns that property?
Fons Corner Holdings LLC. Just a couple of points procedurally. We've read through the petition, and I want to start, maybe I should start off. My client is not opposed to the use as a new or used car dealership on this property. I think as, I think maybe the chairman or Attorney Bullard indicated at the last hearing, it's a commercial zone, there's a lot of commercial development. My client is not opposed to that use on this particular site. His, his concerns really focus on the dimensional variances being requested, and it appeared that from some of the original documents, and I'm not sure this is still the case, that they were trying or looking to head towards a proposal that would not require them to appear before the planning board on the site plan review. So we hope the board does not exempt them from site plan review on a blanket basis, because when I look at the site plan and what they're asking you to consider for dimensional relief, it's pretty significant, as it impacts potentially the abutters and the neighborhood as a whole. But again, before I get into the specifics of that, two other procedural items. Number one, the zoning district that this property falls in is actually two zoning districts. The area west of the wetlands that are on the property are zoned office industrial. The area east of the wetlands are generally zoned limited industrial. And I know the petition in the advertisement lists limited industrial as the zoning district. The main building, the main complex falls in the office industrial zone, and so I think that that's something that should be clarified in any decision that the board makes, and whether that impacts the setback requirements, I'll leave that up to the board. The second, I think, procedural item is, in the plan that I reviewed, the proposal includes primary access on Fons Corner Road and a secondary means of access to access a storage facility...
Will you just stop for a second? I'm going to need that to be muted or turned off. Thank you.
Okay. But I also understand that there is a second means of access to the property to the rear of the wetland system or to the east of the wetland system on the property to access a vehicle storage area, and that access would be coming in off Ventura Drive. At least that's the plan I saw in the original filing in the ZVA office. So they are proposing storage in the back portion on the east side of the wetlands, but no well and crossing, which is admirable, but they're also looking to secure access to an abutting land that has frontage on Ventura Drive. In reviewing the petition, I don't see that parcel listed as part of this particular application, and I would think that if there are improvements that are necessary to support the project that originate on that abutting parcel, then that parcel should be listed, the owner of that parcel should be listed in a signatory on the application, and if you do grant the relief requested, we have a guarantee that in fact this project can move forward as presented to the board. So I think that's a fairly important item, and I don't know if that's still part of the proposal, to enter the site from Ventura Drive, at least in, to access the vehicle storage area, but it's again, something that should be considered. In listening or watching the presentation last time, if I heard correctly, everybody knows there are wetlands on this property. I think Mark Garrett had submitted a comment letter saying that no application had been filed with conservation, which is understandable. They're at a preliminary stage on the planning processes here, but it also sounds like maybe they haven't done a wetland delineation yet, and it hasn't been approved by the Conservation Commission. If that's the case, and as you well know, wetlands are kind of a subjective item, and until that line has been approved by the regulators, we really don't know how much upland there is, how much wetlands there are, is there enough room to support the project as presented? And so we think that at a minimum, you know, wetland determination, determining the line, maybe not going through the full notice of intent process, but determining the line would help establish, can they actually build the facility that they've so far outlined? So those are the kind of general comments, not specific to the relief they're looking for, that we would hope the board would consider along the way here. Now getting to the specifics of the relief on setbacks, again, this is a unusual shape because it's a long, narrow piece of property, I agree with that. There are wetlands, which gives you some hardship associated with developing the land, but the land can be properly developed with a smaller footprint. Now I heard tonight that there's a smaller footprint, but it sounds like they're still going to need the relief on setbacks primarily my client's concern to the south boundary line of the site. When I looked at the plan and I look at the topography of this land, I see quite a grade change from Fons Corner Road down to the wetlands. I think it's over a 20-foot drop in elevation, maybe 15 or 16, which means a lot of grading, potential retaining walls, and those aren't depicted or detailed sufficiently on the plan for an evaluation to be made that with these reduced landscape buffers on the perimeter, is there enough room to physically construct the site and provide some level of buffering to the adjacent properties, both to the south and to the north? East and west, again, the setbacks from the street, I'll leave that to the board, whether that's an appropriate setback to grant. The zoning district in the, the current off-street parking regulations are pretty extensive setback for a facility of this size. But again, with a smaller building footprint, can there be better buffering to the north and to the south? And that's, I think, our primary concern regarding the relief being requested. A final point, I think there are other deviations from Article 24, the site plan review regulations and the parking regulations that weren't specifically listed. Items pertaining to landscaping within the parking facility, dimensions of parking spaces, access aisles, those are critical elements that the town worked hard to get into the bylaw. We're hoping that that relief is not something that's being requested, but the plan does not indicate compliance with the landscaping requirements within the parking facility, which is an important buffer to the public way and the adjacent properties. And then finally, the number of parking spaces. Clearly, that's a special permit to be considered by the planning board. It's specifically worded that way in the zoning, but in order to qualify for that special permit, the applicant needs to demonstrate that they can provide the required number of parking under the bylaw on the site and have the site function as it's intended. And then if they want to reduce the number, they make their argument to the planning board why they don't need as much parking, and I would agree, for a car dealership and the square footage formula, it's a ridiculous amount of parking that's required. However, the bylaw is very specific, and it says, "You must first demonstrate you can do all the required parking, then you can come back and ask for that special permit from the planning board to reduce the number." And the reason for that is, if there happens to be, let's say they say they only need 30 parking spaces, and a year after operating, there comes a point where we've got car carriers out in the street unloading because all the parking spaces are occupied, or the loading area is blocked because there's not enough parking on the site... Next, you know there is a direct impact on the public way, so, which could impact my client, and therefore, the board may come back after a year and say, you need to provide twenty more parking spaces or thirty more parking spaces. That would be within their right, but they need to know that the applicant has planned for that. So the intent of the bylaw, and you look at the bylaw, it's very specific. They really focused on reducing parking, not to increase the activity on the site, but to possibly eliminate impervious surfaces. The wording is actually in the bylaw, that says, you know, you can reduce lot coverage, that's a good thing. Everybody wants to see less pavement. So I think that, in your consideration of the relief, is it appropriate, is the building too big for this particular site? And that's really our major concern, because it seems to be driving the setbacks. The property is not driving it, it's the size of the building that is the intensity of use that seems to be driving the required relief. I think that's really all I have. I think that there were also some relief being requested for the dimensions of a parking space, the current dimension requirements, a ten-by-twenty with a twenty-four-foot access aisle. I think I saw that they were going with smaller spaces, but I also think there's requirements for landscaping after every ten parking spaces. I didn't see that on the last plan, and it may be on the current plan. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can be quiet.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, it's done.
All right, just so we can recap, because we're gonna give the petition opportunity to respond, you had three elements to this. I think two are basically primary, the other one's sort of a secondary situation. So what was number one?
In terms of, well, my first point is the access off of Ventura Drive. Did they properly notify the abutters on Ventura Drive? Was the petition correct in that regard? I think the zoning district item, between office industrial, limited industrial, I think you can probably handle that with any decision you do make. Our concern is landscape buffers, particularly on the south side, because that's the side that would directly impact my client's property. Grading buffers, which, again, with the topography change on this site, it's gonna be very difficult to construct a parking edge, I think it's shown about ten feet from the property line, where the zoning is quite a bit more in terms of the required setback. I think the setback requirement in this district for a facility of this size is a thirty-foot side yard setback to the property line. The setback to their building, it doesn't affect us. My client will rely on the board to make the decision they want on that. And the setback from the street is forty feet, and I know they're not forty feet back. So, that's really more of an impact on the visual aesthetics along Fons Corner Road. Again, I'm not as concerned with that. I'm really concerned with that, how are they gonna construct this on that side? And just from a proper procedural standpoint, should they have notified additional abutters and included the parcel that they are utilizing coming in off Ventura Drive?
We understand what the concerns are?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes.
You can just speak a little louder, for me, please.
What is the total acreage that you're using for this project?
Is that, I don't know. I'll let the engineer or the applicant address that. I'm representing the neighbor to the south.
Attorney Bullard for that.
Yeah, Attorney Bullard will be able to, I'm sure, answer that question.
Attorney Human?
I have nothing.
So at this time, we don't have any questions for you.
Okay.
We're actually gonna allow anyone else who's got any other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any questions or concerns, objections about this petition? Just come forward and please state your name. And address, please.
Rita Souza, 22 Robin Drive.
Just break the microphone down just a little bit, thank you.
Rita Souza, 22 Robin Drive, South Dartmouth, Mass. On the last meeting that we had in July for the proposed 411, we received letters for the abutters, you know, that had property on the site. So other people should have already received those letters to come to the meeting. And I believe that was sent out by the town of Dartmouth.
We're aware of that, and there's also publication in the paper. So, and that's why we have the public hearing, so if people have concerns, they can address those concerns.
Right, so other abutters were?
Notified.
Notified.
So are you an abutter, or are you one of the applicants?
No, we're one of the owners.
Owners, okay.
My mom is the owner.
Fair enough. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request? All right, so at this time, I'm gonna call upon Attorney Bullard. Don't know if you had an opportunity to take any notes, but...
I just can't read my handwriting.
All right, well, I suffer from the same problem. But the three main things are, from the south abut to the property, the south abut is concerned about, and they're speaking of some access from Ventura Drive, and that's not necessarily directly related to him, but just at the project at large, to ensure that we're minimizing impact to the main roadway there. The second issue is landscape buffers on the south side, and also some grading buffers, and also the setback, which he's indicated that the setback under the bylaw is thirty feet, and based on the relief that you're seeking, which is a twenty-two-foot relief, would put it eight feet from the property line. So if you could explain a little bit of that to us and maybe elaborate.
So, before I hand it off to the engineer, because a lot of these questions are technical, a couple of thoughts in response to Mr. Giosa's comments. A lot of what Mr. Giosa said regarding site plan review and Concom and things of that nature, at least has been my practice to not file things with Concom and the other departments because the project is dependent on getting zoning relief, and I don't really wanna run up my client's costs with the hope that we'll get zoning relief. So, my understanding is if we get the zoning relief we seek, then the building permit, the issuance of the building permit will be contingent on us going to various departments to make sure that we satisfy their concerns, and we will, of course, do that. In terms of, in particular, Mr. Giosa mentioned wetlands, and he's right, there's no reason for him to know whether or not the wetlands have been delineated, but my client has spent the money to delineate the wetlands, we just haven't taken them to conservation because it's putting, in my opinion, just putting the cart before the horse. But we have proceeded in good faith to get that done, and then we'll file what needs to be filed with Concom to get them to walk the site and approve it. The total acreage is eighteen point nine acres, and the total of, and Mr. Giosa is spot-on, and you all are aware of this, the property is bisected by wetlands, and we've done everything we can to kind of bypass the wetlands. Only five acres of the, essentially nineteen acres, are gonna be developed. So we think we've made a good faith effort on that. I'm gonna, the engineer, who is the person responsible for the letters that we submitted, is Casey Birch, and I'll let him answer some of your technical questions.
Dr. Agai, did you hear that the lot size, the total lot is eighteen point nine acres, and only about five, well, I've got here, that only about five, what, how many acres again?
Five.
Five, just five?
Yeah.
About five acres are being utilized for the dealership, that are being improved.
Thank you.
There will be below what's allowed with the lot coverage. They only have twenty-six point five, just to explain to...
For the record, my name is Casey Birch, civil engineer, fablean engineer. I just wanted to answer a little bit of the buffer. We have been going through some preliminary grading plans. There will be a wall, not on the south side. The south side's relatively flat when we, due to how we're grading it from our connection points in the drive, there'll be about a three-foot wall on the northern side. But it's, we're requesting for the parking buffer, which is, I'm not sure if this was read into record, but the forty-foot setback, front setback, we're asking for twenty-one, so encroachment of nineteen. And the property line's thirty, we're asking for an encroachment of twenty-two of that, so eight-foot is proposed setback. And then the building was fifteen, we're encroaching to eleven, asking for four, and that's essentially a sidewalk along the drive edge of the building. But there will be no wall on the southern side per our current design.
Let me ask you, is there a way that you could actually increase that buffer there and still be able to perform and utilize the space in a safe manner so that vehicles can get back and forth from the front to the back of that side of the property?
Unfortunately not. And the parking that we do have on our side is not actually, we're not actually considering that parking, it's the auto carrier loading spaces, which, to answer the other concern with the ten-by-twenty, which we are providing the ten-by-twenty spaces and the landscape islands in between on the spaces that are considered parking for patrons and for employees. The auto carrier loading spaces, there is a requirement in the regs for those, and they are not considered parking spaces. So, which is why we didn't provide the landscape in between those. But on along those both sides, we have the nine-by-eighteen, so that's the tightest. If we had any of the other parking spaces, the standard ones, then we'd even be in worse condition as we are now. So, right now, currently with the current building design, there is, it does make it tough to go any closer or further away from that than we currently have it designed.
What are the total number of spaces that are available on this?
We are providing fifty of the standard spaces for the patrons and employees, and then I believe, let me grab my plan. We have ninety-seven auto carrier loading spaces in the front, and, sorry.
Three sixty-six total.
And two hundred and sixty-nine in the back.
Three sixty-six total.
How do you get from the front to the back, to the back parking area?
We will be utilizing twenty Ventura Boulevard, which I think the, is the owner here, or somebody representing for?
No.
Okay. But twenty Ventura Boulevard, there'll be slight modifications to the side drive there to access this, and we are proposing a twenty-four-foot wide connection point to that auto carrier loading area in the back.
And those are gonna be cars that are for sale, both used in new cars, is that where they would be parked?
The new cars, right? Or are they selling, I'm not sure on the business model on this.
I'm not sure about that. All right, well, there'll be cars. But I'm saying, so the patrons that actually go to the car dealership, how are they gonna go see the cars in the back, that are in the back of the property? There's a wetland area there.
They'll, they are, I believe the cars are brought in front to them. So I think it's more of an online system in that respect.
There's not gonna be a footbridge or anything between?
No, that is not allowed per wetland requirements. We did pitch that, and it was shot down by Concom on initial preliminary discussions.
Well, it's really not within my purview, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense that you're gonna basically drive a car, so there needs to be some access across someone else's property to get to Ventura Drive, and then bring the car around, and then onto Fons Corner Road, so that then the car could be test-driven, so to speak, from the dealership?
Hi, I'm Daniel Dusset.
Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm one of the partners in the business, and...
I can have your name, please, we need it for the record. Name and address.
Yeah, my name is Daniel Dusset, and I'm one of the partners in the business for Audi VW for a river, which hopefully will be Audi VW Dartmouth. So this project's been going on for over a year now, and we have probably about three hundred thousand dollars in soft costs. We'd like to get it moving, and I understand some of the questions, and one of them was the storage in the back lot. So that storage is for inventory, that asset inventory, like duplicates and things like that, so it really is not for display. To show them alone in the building, we'll probably have forty cars in it at any one point, which takes some of the load off the lot. I've been involved in a lot of projects. My last project was Mercedes-Benz of Scarborough, and in Scarborough, Maine, they don't allow car dealerships, so we had to do a contract zoning with them. So if you need any references, you can reach out to the town of Scarborough, Maine, you can look at that facility up in Scarborough, it's absolutely beautiful, it's the gateway to the town, and we plan on doing the same thing here. My daughter currently operates that store, and it's impeccable, and this store will be too. So if there's any neighbor concerns, there's no need to be. Just take a look at Mercedes-Benz of Scarborough. It's, it'll be, it'll be a great addition to the town of Dartmouth.
So if I'm to understand correctly, the back lot is gonna be for inventory, but at some point, that inventory does make its way to the front of the building, the front building, in order for it to be displayed or viewed by a potential customer, so that they can...
Yes.
...get a determination of a purchase of it, correct?
Yes, so what we do...
Hold on, how do you expect to bring those vehicles from the rear portion of the property to the front?
So, we have a long-term lease with a property owner at twenty Ventura Drive, and we purchased it after ten years. We plan on driving a vehicle over there, and then driving that vehicle back.
So you'll be driving them along Ventura Drive, then along Fons Corner Road, and then to the front building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question, if you don't mind. So, how do you get in the car unloaded on the back portion?
So at twenty Ventura Drive, that's where our inventory will be stored, on that back side, so there's room for a truck to pull right in that lot and unload right there.
There's room for a tractor trailer to go to the back lot?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Who owns twenty Ventura Drive?
Going through...
Gentlemen's right here, Joe.
Well, that's gotta be required anyways. At least you need to provide the fire apparatus to go in the back, in case. I know I saw a comment from the fire chief, I think he wanted access, maybe that was on the previous application, the original application?
Might have been.
That he wanted to see the turning, you know, of the, yeah, that's, I mean, forty footer, but for the tractor trailer, I'm not sure. If you can go through twenty Ventura, you might have to drop them off in the front and then drive them to the back.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah. And as far as parking, I think you're correct. I think maybe one-fifty per square foot on a dealership, it's not, doesn't make any sense, you know? So you can probably play with the numbers, with the, increase the number on the parking requirement, and then reduce the parking on the display, but then at the end of the time, I mean, obviously you'll have the parking that you need, that you won't be using for public parking, but you can use it for display.
Yes.
But again, that's gonna be through site plan review, we're not, you're not here, we're not here, we're not giving you any reduction on the parking. The main is...
And again, the building itself is forty thousand square feet, I mean, the service driver alone holds twelve minimum cars, and you have the showroom, and you have the service bays out back, so typically be filled...
There's a need for that sized building, right? Is that...
Correct.
I mean, I see like sixteen service bays, and, you know, so... I think that was one of the questions, or one of the concerns, that would it be possible? I don't see any dimensions here, I don't know what the depth of the building from north to south in terms of, you know, and, so I don't know if there was possible to reduce the size by maybe five feet or something, just to increase the...
Again, this process has been going on a long time, so we've been working with Audi, the making...
I understand, I've done some dealership before, and, you know, people that making the decision, they're down in, you know, California somewhere, they, you know, you still have to look at the local... the local zoning bylaws and, you know, so-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
No, nothing.
Anything else, Mr. Bullard?
No, we're, I, as I said, we're anxious to work with the town, and we'll do whatever you all think is appropriate.
Okay.
Certainly.
Again, Steve Giosa, representing the Abutter.
But just to clarify something, the Abutter, is this just vacant land at this point in time?
It is vacant land at this time, yes. He's owned the land for probably fifteen years, and, and we've done numerous office building schemes for the property, but he really hasn't moved forward with any of that yet. But at this point, I would agree with Peter Bullard that the, going to the Conservation Commission or Planning Board before coming to this board doesn't make a lot of sense from a planning standpoint. However, as much as a well-in-line sounds like has been delineated by a privately hired consultant, we all know that well-in-lines, when they go through the review process, tend to move when the regulators look at it. And maybe their consultant has done a comparable job to what Mark Garrett and his staff would arrive at for a well-in delineation, but maybe not. And I've seen well-in-lines move more than fifty feet between the private consultant doing the delineation and the peer reviewer or the town consultant doing the review. I think that's going to have a significant potential impact on what they can do with this property, and if you grant relief for dimensional relief now, is there, are they coming back because no longer can they comply with the plan they've put forward? So we think that's important. It sounds like there are fifty spaces that do meet the dimensional requirements, and it sounds like there are a number of spaces, I didn't hear how many, that are reduced-size spaces. I think the town still allows compact car spaces, so there may be some allowance there. But again, if they've only got fifty spaces at the town standard, then that's all really that the planning board can count from a compliance standpoint. And you still have to demonstrate that you can fit the full number of parking spaces. As ridiculous as the number may be, you have to show it can be accommodated on the site. That would greatly probably reduce their amount of storage of vehicles. We've all dealt with car dealerships. They tend to use every square inch of the storage facility as their facilities get up and running, and I'm sure Audi and VW wouldn't have any problem filling the space. So with that, I think those are just the, the points one more time, and an eight-foot buffer on the south side without final, like being able to see final grading and landscaping designs, impossible to say whether or not it's a significant impact or just a negative impact, because it is significantly closer to the, uh, Abutter's property than the zoning requires. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
I, I, I know, I, Steve, I see what your concerns are, but really, I mean, with the wetlands not affecting, you know, I mean, the wetlands is going to affect the number of spaces they're going to, it might affect the lot coverage, which they're not asking, we're not here for the relief on the number of spaces or the lot coverage. It, it's the buffer, I think. But to make sure, I think if you're concerned, and I agree, probably because if you have to use a retaining wall on the property side and using those mass walls or whatever, they're probably twenty inches wide, you may not get the eight. What we can do, part of this, uh, uh, application, we can, we can specify that you have to provide an eight-foot actual landscape buffer, you know? So, so whatever they grading, if they lose two feet of the width of the wall, if they don't use a, a retail concrete retaining wall, they use a mass wall or, you know, so whatever that is, they have to adjust their line. So I, I understand your concern is the buffer, and we can do that with the eight-foot buffer, you know? But in terms of the wetlands, and I, I think I raised that question last, at the last meeting, if you, I don't know if you watched it-
I did use the last meeting.
And I said, you know, I see a line, was that delineated? Yes, and I agree with you. Sometimes, you know, it was delineated, but it was never submitted, so it was not been approved. But even if the line moved, I think it's going to shift it, the, the buffer's going to shift either in the easterly or westerly direction, and they're going to get less parking spaces, which we're not here to, we're not giving them any relief. You know, they might end up with less parking spaces, but doesn't affect really our decision. I think our decision, and if I under, you know, make it clear, we're, they're here for the setback on the, on the parking.
Right, and I think that, and I agree, that the well-ins line will affect their operation more so than my Abutter, my client's property.
Right.
I think that they're relying on the, I'm sure the program put forward by Audi and VW for the size of the building, but I also know that when you're working with dealers and dealerships, we've done Kia, Toyota, Dodge. Those, those basic programs can be modified to fit the community. We did Kia Dartmouth, we did Toyota Dartmouth, and neither one of those are stock buildings that Kia or Toyota require for their franchise people. I'm sure VW and Audi have multiple building sizes and footprints that they have to work with in different communities and different parcel configurations. We think in this case, and this is a direct impact on the, on the, the Abutter, the size of the building is driving the hardship. It's not the, the land, it's not the topography, it's, it's the size of the building that is driving the hardship, and I think that's a self-imposed hardship. And I, I think that is really summing up our position on that.
Can I just, I just want to add one thing. The, the wetlands delineation, uh, my, my first meeting was back in August of twenty twenty-three, and the, uh, the head of the wetlands, uh, department head mentioned to me about the wetlands, and then we did our, had a couple do the wetlands delineation, and when I met back with him, he said that, uh, our, our wetlands were more conservative than the, the town of Dartmouth. So I, I don't think there was going to be an issue regarding wetlands delineation.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not overly concerned about the wetlands delineation because you pretty much do this at your peril. If you come to find out that your coverage exceeds the requirement, you're going to have to come back to us.
They'll never exceed your coverage.
Well, maybe not, but if they do, they, they do, and if you have other things, if you're not meeting the requirements with the Conservation Commission, you're going to have to, you're going to have to seek whatever relief you can get from them. So I'm not really concerned about that.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why we were proactive, uh, so we wouldn't have this-
Thank you for that, but, and I, and I heard the argument, but I'm not overly concerned, quite frankly.
I think the buffer is more than an issue, uh, concern at this time, and I, I'm not sure what we can do, like, uh, I mean, we, we need to look for some-
Bob, you understand the issue here with regard to the south side?
Yes.
So I guess the argument is, well, they're saying that they have some parameters that need to meet with regard to the, with Audi, which is the, the dealership that approves these types of construction in order for them to be able to conduct business. Um, and they have certain requirements, and those requirements do, uh, set forth a certain size. Now, the other thing is this, it was about, it was about, how many thousand square feet big, it was about two thousand square feet larger? How were you able to make it smaller from the original plan that was submitted to us? What did you take away from the prior building that this one doesn't possess?
Actually, I think that was somewhat of a typo because the design really hasn't changed. So for instance, I think in, in Randy's zoning opinion of June eighteenth, I think he referenced thirty-nine thousand fifty-seven feet. And the plan that I looked at, and Mr. Giosa's right, I think there've been a couple of iterations of the plan, but it, it was clear when I was preparing for the hearing back in July that the plan that I was looking at was just over thirty-five thousand square feet.
I thought there was another one thirty-seven, if I, if I remember correctly.
I don't remember that, but maybe, but, but the, 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 I'm not sure where the thirty-nine came from, but the most recent plan was just over thirty-five thousand.
Your, your position at this point is that the, the size of the building hasn't changed? It was basically some typographical?
What's that?
Yeah, so at, at the last hearing, when, when that was presented in the application, I told Peter right away that that's wrong, we should probably get that fixed on the next one. And I think it's because he, he utilized the letter from-
Okay, fair enough. Now, is there anyone else? Because we've had a few people come in since we opened this hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition for four-eleven Font's Corner Road? Unless it be anybody else, I just wanted to make sure there was no one else.
Right, but before we proceed, Mr. Chair, are we, we're, you know, are we going to discuss whether-
Oh, absolutely.
We're proceeding with this as for variances, we're looking at the parking setback only?
That's, I'll, I'll clarify that, but I just, I just wanted to get a sort of a sense from us. What, what's your feeling, Halim, on this, this buffer situation? Obviously, we have a concern from an immediate Abutter, but, you know, this is not a residential zoning district.
No, I, I think, and I, I think if they can prove, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm trying to, you know, increasing that buffer by a few feet, looking at the size of the building, if you shave a couple of feet, I mean, I do a lot of architectural design too, even I'm a civil engineer. So I, I think it's possible, you know, but again, I, where do we draw the line? I don't want to say, you know, take two feet here and two feet on the other side. Are we happy with ten-foot buffer, let's say? Ten-foot usable buffer? Not being a part of the landscape, a part of the retaining wall or something like that, you know? Would that be something more? And I agree, I mean, it's, it's industrial area. I, I have no concern with the buffer in the front, I tell you that, Steve, because I've seen other buildings there, and they have twenty-four feet of landscape in the front to the property line, maybe possibly thirty feet, so that's, that's good, you know?
One part I want to make, uh, is, uh, take a look at the, the history of that lot. I mean, uh, Joe Rose has cars parked on the street. If you go to Jule, Jule four-eleven Font's Corner Road, you'll see the cars right up to the curb.
I, I agree. I'm, you know, it's still, again, this is, we're looking at the whole, you know, lot and, I, I think it's reasonable, you know, I-
But you did make a suggestion so that it was an eight-foot usable buffer. So I don't know what the, what the phrase is in the engineering industry to ensure that there's going to be some-
Usable means if they do their grading plans and they find out that they need five-foot retaining wall over there and they lose two feet of the, of the buffer, they will have to either push their building back or, you know, to comply, or they have to come back to us and modify the special permit, uh, the variance.
But the term usable, is that something that the building inspector's going to understand? As far as, you know, what, 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 what we're believing it to be versus how it could be interpreted by someone else?
Or let's say minimum eight feet of vegetated buffer.
Okay.
Just again, not to drag this out, I'm not in a position to negotiate a buffer strip that would be acceptable to my client. My client is clearly willing to, to meet with and talk to the applicant on this issue, but I'm not in a position to agree to eight feet, ten feet, twenty feet.
Right, no, I agree with you.
So I just wanted to get that on the record.
Unfortunately, I mean, this is, you know, I'm not sure how we came here. I believe they've been doing some preliminary meetings and, and worked with the town for the past two years, and, uh, I, I think overall this is a good project. It's a good project for that area in particular. It's for that specific property too, and, and it's a win-win for everyone, and I-
Well, I think, and what, what's there now certainly could use some, you know, some improvement. So I think this is certainly a step in the right direction as far as aesthetics go, but that's not really, you know, our primary concern. Look, if we want to move forward, we can move forward. I can start reading things into the record, and if you find, if you guys are okay with it, we can decide. If you're not, then we can, we can vote accordingly.
I'm fine.
All right, so I'm not going to close the public meeting in case I have any questions. We still have the second part of this, which is the use part, but for now, and just for the viewers at home, just to make it clear, the only thing we're voting on is basically parking-
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Relief.
Excuse me, you have, uh, excuse me? You have copies? Yeah, this is the variance case, ZAV twenty-four-ten. Here you go, guys. There are going to be some changes already made to this. All right, here are just some proposed findings. The subject property is located at four-eleven Font's Corner Road and is further identified on Town of Dartmouth Assessor's Map sixty-three Lot Twelve. The property is eighteen point nine-one acres and is located in a limited industrial, and it should say the office-
District, yeah, office industrial.
Is it office industrial, office park? Office industrial zona district.
OI, office industrial.
OI zoning district. The petitioner, Raymond Rose Senior, trustee, has owned the property. I don't know why I have this, but it says since August twenty nineteen. Is that correct? What I, Mr. Bullard? I, I must have gone off some of the assessor's records. It may have been a recent transfer into a trust.
Well, I think that's when it was transferred into a trust.
Okay, fair enough. Trustee has owned the property since August twenty nineteen. The locust property is the former site of Rose Motors, which has not renewed its auto sales and service license since December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The pre-existing non-conforming use is, is expected to lapse on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The petitioner proposes to construct a thirty-five thousand five-hundred-and-three-square-foot plus-or-minus car dealership with a parking lot area to display new and used automobiles. The design of the parking lot does not meet setback requirements, number of spaces or size of spaces. The petitioner is seeking relief from Article twenty-four, Section three-seventy-five dash twenty-four-point-three-C parking facility setbacks. Parking facilities shall meet the following minimum setbacks: forty feet from street line, thirty feet from property line, and fifteen feet from a building. The property is currently approved with a car dealership with associated drives and a parking area, which is pre-existing non-conforming use that has not been abandoned. The property has approximately six, six-point-two acres of on-site wetlands. The property is approximately, I already have that on there, hold on. Majority of which traverse the property from north to south approximately five-hundred-and-twenty feet from Font's Corner Road. The property is very narrow with an average width of two-hundred-and-fifty-two feet. The petitioner is seeking a variance for the parking facility setback, specifically the minimum setback of forty feet from the street, thirty feet from property lines, and fifteen feet from the building. The development will encroach into the street setback by nineteen feet for a final measurement of twenty-one feet from the street line. The development will encroach into the property line setback by twenty-two feet for a final measurement of eight feet from the property line to the parking facilities. And the development was, will also increase into the building setback by eleven feet for a final setback measurement of fourteen feet from, excuse me? Is it four? Four feet from the building to the parking facilities. We don't have, okay, eight feet, that's right. So those are basically the findings.
The site, uh, the, is, is subject to site plan review from the planning board and relief of parking spaces, because you mentioned that-
That's right, I, I can cross it out, but I could put here, the number of spaces or size of spaces. The number and size of spaces is not within the purview of this board.
And will be-
And will require-
Approval.
Site plan approval from the planning board. That ties it up.
And you might want to see, also the site is subject to approval from Conservation.
Okay, we can put that in there too. Site is also subject to Conservation Commission review and approval.
Presence of the wetlands on the property.
And approval due to the existence of wetlands on the property. All right, we okay with those findings so far, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yep.
The analysis, four-pronged test is, there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that speci, that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the sub, the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. The subject parcel has an irregular shape, it is very long and narrow with an average width of two-hundred-and-fifty feet, creating significant restrictions for commercial use. There exists a significant slow- There exists a significant slope and change in topography on the eastly side of the property. The property is divided by areas of wetlands and poorly draining soils. The soil conditions on the property restricts the areas in which the property can be developed." Two, "A little enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The existing building that serves the petitioner as a car dealership is dated and in need of repair. The continued use of the property as a car dealership would require the construction of a new building that meets the needs of a modern-day new car dealership." And in case you guys have any suggestions, I'm open to them. Number three, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The board finds that the desire to relieve may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And four, granting the proposed relief will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purposes of the bylaw. Granting of the setbacks from the street line, property line, and building are in keeping with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Now, one of the things that we can do is we can put, and we have our normal and usual conditions, and one of them is that the setback from the property line, the eight-foot setback, has to be a vegetated buffer area. Is that fine?
I buy that, yeah.
All right. A setback from the southern property line of eight feet must be a vegetated area.
Well, I think you should put all the buffer. I mean, you know.
But at the minimum of the eight feet.
Should be also the other side, too.
Well, how far is the other side? Is it also eight feet from the northern side?
It's less than that. I think the other side is six.
Well, it can't be six.
Well, they have to be. This is part of the site plan review. They have to do vegetated...
I understand that, but the thing is, I didn't think that there was, it's six feet on both sides, the north and the southern part?
It's eight feet in the southern part.
How many?
Eight.
Eight on the southern. What's the northern side?
The northern's eight as well.
Okay, eight.
All right.
Well, just...
Difficult, because you can't do it on the northern part because they got a four-foot difference. They're going to have to put a retaining wall on that side. So we're going to keep it on the southern portion. Southern property line. Good. All right. And the usual conditions that we have, they're going to require all permits from other local boards or whatever else. Any questions?
No.
So now, we have a choice. We can open up the next one before we vote on this one and close this public hearing. Before we do that, open up the next one, because, so we don't piecemeal it.
Keep it open.
We'll keep it open, and we'll move on to the next one. Okay. Excuse me? Okay, but if I do, and we don't grant the other one, then we've granted one, okay? And I want to do that. I don't want to piecemeal it. I thought about that, too. All right. So moving on to the second portion of this request, which is a separate matter and a separate petition. It's special permit 24-13. The petitioner applicant is Peter Bullard Esquire. The owner is Raymond Rose, trustee. The subject property is 411 Fons Corner Road, Map 63 Lot 12. The property is located in a limited industrial and office industrial zoning district. This case was legally advertised. This was a separate advertising. So it was advertised on August 22nd and August 29th of 2024.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the butters list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Here, in this case, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to construct, and it says here 39,000, but it should be a 35,000 5,503-square-foot car dealership. And I don't know if I do have a letter from the building inspector. Do we have a denial letter on this one? Because I didn't get one. It's not the one.
So the two denial letters I have, it's the first one, June 18th, and then August 1st from Randy. And the one on August 1st essentially says that he doesn't...
That's the one I read into the record.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was read before.
Yes.
So I don't need to read it again. But this one specifically deals with the issue of whether or not it should be petitioned as a special permit or a zoning variance. All right. Are there any other? All right. So I got a letter from the Board of Health Agent.
Director.
Director? Director of Public Health. I apologize. Got to give the man his title. Dear Mr. Maderis and members of the Board of Appeals, thank you for the opportunity for the Health Department to review the special permit application, ZSP 2413, and the accompanying site plan for 411 Fons Corner Road. The application appears to seek relief from the town zoning bylaws, particularly setbacks and number of spaces required per zoning denial letter dated June 18, 2024. The intensity of the proposed land use is due to efforts by the EPA and Mass DEP with the Federal Clean Water Act and the Massachusetts Surface Water Quality Standards. Most importantly is the need to protect surface and groundwater from detrimental land uses and to ensure adequate supply and safe drinking water from our downstream public water supply wells. Stormwater has not been a focus of the Health Department since the comprehensive rewrite of the Aquafer Protect, the Aquafer Protect Overlay District Bylaws around 2003. However, emerging concerns with environmental and sanitary water quality have brought these issues back to the forefront. Within the Town of Dartmouth are watersheds to several impaired or degraded estuaries and embayments, namely the Slocum's River and Westport River. The documentation of the impairment is made by Mass DEP and approved by the EPA, with each approval designating a total maximum daily load for the pollutant-creating impairment nitrogen. Sources of nitrogen in watersheds vary, and each report provides a breakdown of the controllable nitrogen. Additionally, we're now aware that Mass DEP has a draft document that will declare the Pascua-Mansett River as a pathogen-impaired waterway, and if promulgated as drafted, will create water quality standards and numeric targets. The approved Slocum River total maximum daily load for nitrogen and the draft TMDL for pathogens in the Pascua-Mansett all result from scientific reports. Each report notes the significance of stormwater contributing to the environmental and recreational degradation of the Pascua-Mansett River and the Slocum's River. See link documents in their entirety. The project parcel, 411 Fons Corner Road, is within the Pascua-Mansett River and Slocum's River watershed and in very, in very close proximity to the Pascua-Mansett River and proposes to increase impervious area and thereby create additional stormwater. Stormwater is a source of pollution in marine systems, with nitrogen being a constituent and primary concern. Within the final Slocum's and Little Rivers Embayment Systems, total maximum daily loads for total nitrogen, a chart exists on page 10 that lists the sources of nitrogen that we can control. Impervious surfaces contribute 29% of the controllable nitrogen in the Slocum's River watershed. This is noteworthy because the amount of controllable nitrogen from on-site septic systems is 29%. And no other source of nitrogen in a watershed is greater. Therefore, any increase to impervious area above what is allowed by right is adding new sources of nitrogen that were not intended and is furthering the contribution of a pollutant to an impaired marine environment, the Slocum's River, and will only make the situation harder to address when we are forced to. As noted, the project parcel is in close proximity to the Pascua-Mansett River, and the draft Massachusetts statewide total maximum daily load for pathogen-impaired water bodies notes potential sources of pathogens, including stormwater. Reduction of any potential source of pathogens in the Pascua-Mansett River is essential to protecting not only the river, but also the Aquafer 2 zone that feeds the town's public drinking water supply wells off Chase Road. Therefore, how does an application that proposes impervious lot coverage not achieving the required setbacks protect the zoning district and town? Meeting setbacks would provide for less runoff as the buffer would be available for natural or vegetated surface. That with proper engineering could mitigate the discharge of pollutants from the project parcel. Additionally, the ability to remove nitrogen from stormwater is difficult from above-ground designs, and when discharged below the ground is in subsurface systems, nitrogen removable is negligible. Therefore, any consideration of the application, if possible, should consider a requirement of stormwater treatment in above-ground designs and not subsurface. Planning Board does that, don't they? Do they not, as part of site plan review?
It'll be part of the review.
While the reduction in setback is one focus of this application before the Board of Appeals, I wanted to take the time to advise of adverse implications of a land use that fails to meet minimum requirements that have benefits beyond visual setbacks between adjacent parcels. At some point, the town will face proposed regulations to manage pollutants, and the piecemeal approach of adding excessive impervious area by special permits to allow the greater use of land will make restoration more difficult. Imposing of the town's bylaw may create an inconvenience to the property or business owner. However, the implications to our public drinking water supply and environment are a greater concern to the people and businesses and just one of the many purposes behind the adoption of such restrictions. Therefore, upholding the intent of the purpose of the zoning bylaw, limitations to regulate land use is essential if the town is to protect our public water supply and assure the sanitary integrity of the river that runs through some of the aquifer areas in town and to protect the environmental integrity of the Slocum's River. While the overall acreage may perceive the project as being consolidated and well-obtrusive, some reasonable limit must exist with furthering land uses beyond zoning limitations that will add pollutant loads to our impaired waterways and therefore detrimental to the zoning district. Please feel free to reach out with any questions. Signed, Christopher Michaud, Director of Public Health. All right. So at this time, anybody have any questions about what I've read into the record?
No.
All right. We've got a couple more here. Planning Department, Planning Board's site plan review is required if this special permit is approved. Absolutely. We're counting on it. DPW, compliance with the following DPW regulations. They're always the same regulations that we always read. And the Fire Department, the site plan for building permit must include a swept path analysis of fire truck maneuvers throughout the property and fire lanes per district measurements. That's something that the building inspector's going to enforce. All right. So the petitioner's counsel.
So as you've read and referenced, this is our request for a special permit, which was filed after our July 24th meeting, because it was thought that perhaps an expansion of a pre-existing use would fall under the purview of a special permit. And we're back to the beginning in that we have two contrary opinions on that from two highly qualified zoning enforcement officers. So we've, as you know, thanks to the engineer, we've provided you with information addressing point by point. Randy's denial letter, but Mr. Bassett thinks that we need a variance and a use variance. And the question is, I guess, to be decided by you all whether or not we proceed with a use variance or whether or not we proceed with a special permit.
All right. Maybe I can help you out a little bit. So, but before we go there, let me just see if there's anyone in the audience. This is a separate petition. Is there anyone in the audience that has and would like to come forward and speak either in opposition or in support of this request? So the first part of this was for a variance, and that was for the setback requirements for parking. And now, it's basically to make a determination if the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use should be done by special permit. And their request is by special permit. And some of that was as a result of some of the direction that we also provided, because they came here, I think, before requesting a variance. And I had a certain opinion. And obviously, I respect the opinion of our building inspector. I've read his position on this, and I respect it. But I think I have a different take on what the law, the bylaw requires on this. Having said that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and either object or support this request? So it appears we have about 20 people in the audience, and no one has raised a hand and no indication that they'd like to speak. So Bob, you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to either ask any one of us or the petitioner's representative?
Not at this time.
Okay. So Halim, I'm not sure what your position is on this, but I think that the interpretation of our building inspector, although well-taken, I think it limits some of what the intent is to have expansions of pre-existing structures or pre-existing conditions. I think I have a little more liberal interpretation of that. And I don't want a situation where people will have to knock down three walls of a building, maintain one wall, and say it's an addition, and therefore, it's an expansion of a pre-existing building, rather than knocking down the entire building and putting up an entirely new building. I don't think that that was the intent of what some of that was when they drafted these bylaws. So I'm of the position that this could be granted by special permit. And if you guys feel comfortable doing that, obviously, I'm only one person. If you're comfortable doing that, then we can proceed it being granted by special permit.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. And how about you, Halim?
Yeah, I think we discussed that last time. And we said, you know, this is, again, it could be, we can proceed with this as a special permit, you know?
And I understand it could go either way. And quite frankly, I think they would satisfy it either way. But this, it's just my interpretation of what an expansion of a pre-existing condition could be. And with all due respect to our building inspector, and I'm grateful that he obviously has his opinion, and he's expressed it to us. And he was also willing to come forward if we needed him here today. But I feel comfortable that I have a good take on this. So with your permission, gentlemen, I'm just going to read some findings into the record. All right. So the subject property is located at 411 Fons Corner Road and is further identified on Town of Dartmouth Assessors Map 63 Lot 12. The property is 18.91 acres and is located in the Office Industrial and Limited Industrial Zoning District. The petitioner, Raymond Rose Senior, trustee, has owned the property since August 2019. The locust property is the former site of Rose Motors, which has not renewed its auto sales and service license since December 31st, 2022. The pre-existing non-conforming use is expected to lapse on December 31st, 2024. The petitioner proposes to construct a 35,503-square-foot plus-or-minus car dealership with a parking lot area to display new and used automobiles. The petitioner is seeking relief on the Article 24, Section 375-21.2C, allowed uses. The property is currently improved by a building utilized as a car dealership with associated drives and a parking area, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use that has not been abandoned. The property is approximately 6.2 acres of on-site wetlands, the majority of which traverse the property from north to south, approximately 520 feet from Fons Corner Road. The property is very narrow with an average width of 252 feet. Petitioner is seeking a special permit to expand the building to accommodate a car dealership operation from its existing size and use to occupy a newly constructed 35,503-square-foot building for a new and used car dealership operation. The board finds that the expansion of the car dealership will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And we have our usual conditions.
Yeah. You probably still want to add the two findings that we added to the variance for the site plan review and conservation.
We can add those.
It doesn't hurt.
Those two, the ones that are handwritten. No, it doesn't hurt. I agree. All right. So if we're okay with that, we got to move back to the first one. I think it's appropriate to move back to the first one, which is the variance. Let's close the public hearing on that one and then we decide if we want to vote on that. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I just want to make sure we have the...
The right one?
The right...
And you know something? I don't have it in front of me right now.
Is it ZAV 24-10?
24-10. No, I have it right here. No? That's ZSP. Here it is, right here.
Okay. All right, got it. Okay, thank you. So I make a motion that we close the public hearing on variance case ZAV-24-10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The hearing's closed. Any other comments, gentlemen?
No. No.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve variance case ZAV-24-10 with the finding and the conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Now, moving on to the special permit.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
On the hearing that's still open?
Yes. Come on forward, please.
This is just a point of clarification. It's my understanding that the zoning enforcement officer has rendered an opinion that a variance is required and not a special permit. It's my understanding the correct procedure would be for the petitioner to challenge or request this board to address that denial of a building permit based on the need for a variance. If you're making the determination that the special permit is the correct approach, how does that void the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer's decision that a variance is in fact required? It's my understanding the petitioner should and is required to file an appeal of that decision with this board, and then you would render that decision. So just a point of order in terms of how this proceeds, as I said, we're not opposed to the use per se, but I think that it's, the correct procedure is appeal the decision of the building inspector, then you could grant the necessary relief or special permit.
The history of this was, he actually came before us for a variance, and we instructed, and we felt that a variance was not necessary.
Right. I saw that.
And at that point, we asked that he submit it as a special permit.
Right.
So if he's done it, he's done it at our request.
I understand. But again, there is a decision by the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer. Again, I'm just putting that out there.
And we had to give it a lot of, I had to give it a lot of consideration as to where I wanted to go with it, but that's the interpretation I had had before this. It's the interpretation I had during the hearing, the last time we were here, and I still feel the same way about it. But I respect that. Thank you.
I think it's, the zoning board has the jurisdiction to make a decision whether it's, I've been to towns and Town of Canton, for sure, you know, we leave it open. We don't know if it's a zone, it's a special permit or variance. We apply for both, and the zoning will make a determin, zoning board will make a determination whether it's-
But I think his position is that procedurally, he felt it should have been an administrative appeal first rather than going this way. I understand that. Nonetheless, thank you. So gentlemen, on this one, I think we need to close the public hearing, right?
Motion to close the public hearing on ZAV 24-13?
ZSP.
ZSP.
Yeah. Special permit, right?
Special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any questions or comments, gentlemen? If being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve special permit ZSP 24-13 with the findings and conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. There you go. Should I clean this up a little bit? Yeah, the other two.
Oh, this one? Rain garden.
All right. The meeting. Folks. Moving on to the next matter on tonight's agenda, it's variance case ZAV 24-11. The petitioner is Thomas Percy Esquire. The owner is Nelson Tavars. Subject property is 5 Mary Ann Way, map 137, Lot 10-9. The property is located in a single residence A zoning district. The matter was legally advertised on July 4th and July 11th.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the butters list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Anyone who would like to see the butters list, it's available at the zoning office, and you can speak to the clerk. The petitioner in this case is seeking a variance for side yard setback to construct a garage addition and expansion of a driveway and concrete area. All right. So let's see. What have we got for comments? This is Mary Ann Way. I've got a denial letter. Got a denial letter from the building inspector. It's addressed to Nelson Tavars. It says, "I've reviewed your application. At this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Single-story proposed garage addition on pre-existing non-conforming lot. Applicant is looking to increase the nonconformity by encroaching lot lines from 19.2 to 7.1 side setback. Variance is required. Your application is being denied in the following sections of Dartmouth zoning bylaw, 375-7.4D. The purpose of the lot setback requirements is to lessen congestion and overcrowding of lots to provide access within the lot for general circulation and maintenance of the buildings located thereon, to provide access in the case of fire, and to lessen congestion and promote safety in adjacent streets." So here, they're looking for the side yard setback is 20 feet from perimeter property lines. And this letter is from the zoning, from the building inspector. Any other comments that I need to review? I'm sure there are more.
DPW?
Well, here's just DPW. DPW, Compliance with the Following DPW Regulations, Rule and specification will be required but not limited, and basically the same requirements that we always put in our conditions. I'm going to look at the last one. It said, "Site plan shall show all existing utilities to avoid conflicts with new structures. No utilities are shown on the submitted site plan." So something your client should be mindful of, counsel.
For the record, Attorney Tom Percy for the petitioner.
Thank you.
That was shown on the plan, the revised plan that was submitted.
Wonderful.
I think there's a support letter from the-
There is a support letter. I saw that a second ago. I just got so many pages flying around here. Here it is. This letter is addressed to the Town of Dartmouth Office of Zoning Board of Appeals. It is a letter in support of a petition for zoning variance at 5 Mary Ann Way. Dear sir or madam, our good neighbor Nelson and Paula Tavars and their lovely family of 5 Mary Ann Way have proposed a zoning variance to the Town of Dartmouth Office of Zoning Board of Appeals to allow for the expansion of their garage and driveway. We are signing this letter in full and complete support of their petition. We believe that this petition will benefit their family and overall neighborhood in the Town of Dartmouth. Signed, Elmano M. Dutra, currently of 7 Mary Ann Way, and Maria L. Dutra, currently of 7 Mary Ann Way. So we got to find out where they are. I believe that they're in a but, I don't know if they're the immediate butter, but if they are, that's always helpful.
Mr. Chairman, they are the immediate a butter.
Wonderful. All right. So I'm going to call upon Attorney Percy. Long time no see.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see you again, members of the board. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Nelson and Paula Tavars. They are seeking a variance request, as you had indicated, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the side yard, current side yard setback from 19.2 feet to 7.1 feet to allow for the construction of a second bay for a garage that they currently have at their lovely home. And Mr. and Mrs. Tavars have a growing family. The current garage on site is essentially a non, or dysfunctional one, large one-bay garage. They're looking to make it into a functional two-bay garage with the supporting needs of a growing family for storage, for things like bicycles and sporting equipment and auto repairs stuff and all that kind of things.
I have a three-bay garage, and it's still not enough.
There you go. There you go. So Mr. and Mrs. Tavars have spoken to the people in their neighborhood. They have a very nice, tight-knit community. Everybody's in a scent. They've got the immediate neighbor who's directly abutting that is being most directly impacted by this reduction.
This is the actual side that directly abutting this?
It's on that side. As a matter of fact, their kids are tonight being watched by their neighbors. It's a very nice community. So everyone is in support of this. As you can see from the submitted application materials, the addition is going to be very consistent with the existing design of the home. It is going to be very, very minimal in the sense of what's needed. As part of the application process, my clients took into consideration the minimal needs. So they're seeking the minimum relief from you folks to add this. You will note that there's a step back in the front. The garage only goes to a certain depth. They could have requested more. They could have gone out wider. This is essentially an application to take a dysfunctional one-car garage and turn it into a functional two-car garage for a growing family. And beyond that, in terms of the statutory requirements, all I can say is that with regard to the unique circumstances, literal enforcement, substantial harm to the public good, all of that kind of thing, this whole situation derives from the fact that the house's construction, that the footprint of the house was so close, when it was originally built, so close to the Westerly property line. If it wasn't for that, then we wouldn't be here. There would have been adequate room to extend onto the garage. And of course, you can't go around the other side of the garage. They literally had no other option but to come before the board and request your permission in order to grant the requested relief. So I'm here to answer questions. My clients are here. They're willing to do whatever they can do to answer whatever the board's concerns or questions are.
I get what's going on. So given it's a public hearing, we always provide people an opportunity to either speak in favor or against a petition. So at this point in time, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and either speak in opposition or in favor of this petition. There being about 15 people in the audience, I can report to our viewers at home. No one has raised their hand. It's a fairly straightforward situation. Members, you have any questions of counsel?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, any questions of counsel?
No.
There's no place really to, for the addition.
I get it.
Anything you do, it's kind of required.
So I got some proposed findings that I would like to read, and we can go with the four-pronged test here. So we leave the, as a matter of practice, we always leave the public hearing open. In case I've got some information that's incorrect, that way you could still provide me input or anyone else. The subject property is located at 5 Mary Ann Way and is also known as Dartmouth Assesses Map 137, Lot 10-9. The property has been owned by Nelson P. Tavars since May 2013 and is located in a single residence A zoning district. The petitioner seeks to construct a single-story garage addition a distance of 7.1 feet from the side yard property line where 20 feet is required. Petitioner seeks relief from 375-7.4D setback 2B, which requires a building or structure must have a 20-foot minimum setback from all other perimeter property lines. The board finds that the requested variance meets the requirements-
Yes, that's for sure.
-meets the requirements of Mass General Law 48, Section 10. The four-pronged test is, one, there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. Gentlemen, I have a response here, but I'm open to any interpretation or any suggestions, okay? The lot has a unique shape wherein it is narrow and long. The existing home and its location in relation to the lot boundaries poses limitations to any lateral expansion of the dwelling. Two, a literal enforcement, the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. Response would be the expansion slash addition of a garage will enhance the petitioner's use of the property wherein petitioner and their family members will be able to garage a vehicle and provide storage for their personal property. The garage will allow for the storage of an automobile off the roadway and out of view from neighbors. Three, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The proposed garage will be in keeping with the character of the home and the general neighborhood. Your abutting neighbor closest to the proposed garage is in support of this petition. And the last is four, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The proposed garage is setback more than 50 feet from the roadway, and the two remaining setbacks requirements are in compliance with zoning. That's as well as I could see it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We usually have the typical requirements. You have to get any other approvals, obviously, from the building department if there's any conservation issues, if there's any planning board issues. I don't foresee any of that with you, just aside from building. I don't think there are any conservation issues, but those are things that you would have to comply with. Your clients would have to comply with. All right. Any other questions?
I have none.
Gentlemen? None.
No, thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion we close the public hearing on variance ZAV 24-11?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request.
I make a motion we approve variance ZAV 24-11 with all the findings and conditions as previously stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations, folks.
Members of the board. Thank you.
You got a place to put more stuff. There you go. All right. Moving on. The last hearing that we have, public hearing, is special permit ZSP 24-10. The petitioner is Timothy Boshant, and the owner is Jay Marujo. The subject property is located 47 Spring Street, and it's map 165, Lot 62. This was a, this was a previously, this is a continued case. All right. This is actually a continued case. The property is located in the general residence in Aquifer Zone 3 District. The matter was legally advertised on July 4th and July 11th. I think we waived the reading of the butters list on that matter. And I think that this has been somewhat limited now because there is actually only, the only issue is with regard to lot coverage. The petitioner is seeking a special permit, a proposed garage addition for lot coverage from 7.5 to 15.7 inches, 15.7 percent, excuse me. All right. So at this point in time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forward and provide us any updated information since the last time they were here. Yeah, here you go. You got a coffee? Hmm? Yeah, but this is good enough.
This is the revised one.
This is the revised one? Yeah.
This is the revised plans.
Well, I had a larger one there.
They came in today.
Yes. And I think the lot coverage changed because I had a different number before. It's less, which we always like to see. All right. Could you please identify yourself, name and address?
Jamie Marujo, 47 Spring Street. So with regards to the lot coverage, I know that Mr. Farland sent an email in because he was not going to be able to be present for this. We actually reduced that to 12.9 from what was previously stated, and I believe that drawing there shows that. Beyond that, we took into account some notes from, or comments from the previous meeting with regards to the wetlands, and there were some changes made as well. And Mr. Farland sent a detailed email stating what those were, which I can read, but I think Michelle has a copy as well.
Just paraphrase to us exactly what they are.
So-
Just with the wetlands. I can see that the lot coverage, always nice that it's less and not more.
Yep.
With regard to the wetlands, what happened?
So he's stating that he added a rain garden in lieu of the subsurface recharge, and I believe that was a comment that was made at the last meeting. And then we've also, with regards to the lot coverage, removed the driveway off of Spring Street, which basically reduced the overall lot coverage.
They reduced the lot coverage.
Wonderful. All right.
This is the preferred method of stormwater because it's bio-retention that provide more removal of nitrogen, that's why.
That's why it's so good to have an engineer on our board because he understands the, you know, the cutting edge and what things are that need to be done.
Yeah.
Well, I think I have a letter I got to read into the record here. No, you didn't give me this. No, I didn't get this. Part of the packet. Just one second. It says here, this is, "Good afternoon, Michelle," and this came from Mr. Bassett, the building inspector. "Please notify the ZBA that I have been in contact with the applicant. The proposed accessory apartment is in compliance with the town's bylaws, and no relief is required. The special permit for lot coverage is the only ZBA approval required. That, I had become aware of it, and thank you very much." That's the only thing we're considering here today is the lot coverage.
I do have a drawing here as well that illustrates exactly where the rain garden would be going, and there'd be no touching of what's existing as far as trees and-
We have it.
I have, I have a nice plan here. I thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So as you, I'm sure you've noted, you've seen, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or in objection to this petition, please come forward, state your name and address and what your concerns may be.
Yeah, I'm Denise Bono, 87 Martin Avenue, in a butter on the opposite side of the street.
Okay.
The meeting on July 24th. We had concerns about the size of the garage, and at that time, it was 1,100 square feet. And there was supposed to be a revised plan to 800 square feet.
I don't have a recollection of that. I think what that might have been was having to do with whether or not it was an apartment. And if it's an apartment, then it has to be limited to 800 square feet. A garage, there really isn't any size limitation as to a garage, the only limitations that exist are usually setback variances, as far as how far they can go, the garage can extend either to any of the perimeter property lines, or how far it needs to be from a front lot line, and according to this, this meets all of those requirements. The only thing that he's doing here is because this property is located in an aquifer protected area, which your property, I would presume, also is, because it exceeds 10% of total lot coverage, he's now at 12.9, he needs to seek relief, and he's here asking for that. And it's not uncommon for this board to grant people who come before us seeking relief from the lot coverage requirement, the percentage, we've granted as much as 40, sometimes even 50%.
Okay, from that meaning, that's not what we understood. We understood it was the size of the garage, that would be from 1,100 to 800 square feet.
You might have understood that, but we wouldn't, we don't really have any jurisdiction over limiting the size of someone's garage. I think what he may, what may have happened is he had an apartment that he wanted to put above the garage, and there's a, and there's a restriction within our bylaw that if it's gonna be utilized as an apartment, that it cannot be of a certain size. And at this point, whatever plans he submitted to the building inspector, those meet the requirements of the bylaw, that's what the letter just said, so he doesn't need that form of relief. I think he's had an opportunity to review this, and I think what he did was, he heard some of the comments and the concerns that the neighbors may have had, so he revised his plan, put himself in probably the best possible position he could to get the relief that he's seeking.
Okay, but that's not how we understood it.
Okay, that's fine. But thank you for explaining that. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition? Certainly. Could you just, please state your name and address?
Shannon Viera at 50 Fenton Street, and I just wanted to say that I do support it.
You support it?
Yep.
Where are you in relation, you said Center Street?
Fenton Street.
Oh, Fenton Street, okay. Oh, so this is, okay, oh, I see, so you're on the other side.
I'm on the other side, yes.
On the other side, okay. So this property actually has frontage on three streets?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? I remember last time, there were some concerns, given the size of the garage, whether or not it be utilized as some sort of a business, and we made it abundantly clear that that's not something that our bylaw allows. Now, we can't say what's going to happen, but certainly, if it appears that there's some commercial use that's going on there, all it requires is calling the building inspector, and he's the chief zoning enforcement officer, that's his job, and if someone is conducting a business out of a residential district, then they can't do it. They will be given a cease and desist order, that's the normal practice.
Absolutely.
And I can understand the concern, I wouldn't want it next to my house. Even though I think I have something going on next to my house, but I don't, I wouldn't want it next to my house. So if there's no, no other comments, then we're gonna move forward, and I am going to read some findings into the record, and then possibly close the public hearing. All right, so folks, the subject property is located at 47 Spring Street, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and also known as Assessors Map 165 lot 62. The property has been owned by Jamie Marujo since January 2021, and is located in the general residence in Aquifer Protection Overlay Zoning District, Zone 3. The petitioner seeks a special permit to construct a garage addition in a second-level apartment to an existing single-family home. The petitioner seeks relief under Article 28, Section 375-28.5b8, prohibited uses lot coverage above 10%, or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater. The existing lot coverage is 7.5%, and the proposed lot coverage after the construction of the garage and apartment addition will be, and I gotta change this, it's 12.9, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, 12.9. The board finds that the addition of the proposed garage and second-level apartment will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And we have our usual conditions, you've heard it a few times tonight, you gotta get a building permit, you gotta comply with all zoning bylaws, if there's any, if there's any plant, site plan review with planning board, if there's any conservation issue, I don't think there's any of that, but those are things that need to be satisfied no matter what. Okay, any comments, any questions? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close special permit case number ZSP-24-10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing's closed, gentlemen. What's your pleasure?
Go ahead, Bob. I make a motion that we approve, SP 24-10, as submitted, along with conditions and.
Findings?
Findings.
Findings, as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations. All right, moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's hearing, we have review and approval in administrative minutes of August 7, 2024.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
No comments. Gentlemen, any comments?
No comments.
All right, entertain a motion.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, we're still in session here, if your conversation, if you can have them outside, just please, because we're on record, that's the only thing, all right? But feel free, you can, you can congregate right outside, feel free to have conversations. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve administrative minutes of August 7, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Review and approval in minutes of August 7, 2024, variance case ZAV 24-13, for Baker's Brook Holdings LLC.
I make a motion that we, well, I have nothing, Mr. Chair, I, actually, I missed that meeting, so.
Oh, you did.
I did look at the.
You looked at it, that's fine. Gentlemen, any questions or comments about those minutes?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, Bob, if you can present that motion, please.
Yeah, I kinda lost my.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 7, 2024, for variance case ZAV 24-13, for Baker's Brook Holding LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Review and approval in minutes of August 7, 2024, variance case ZSP, well, it can't be a variance and a ZSP.
Sorry.
Is it a special permit? Special permit. Special permit, ZSP 24-11-213, Little River Road.
Make a motion that we approve the, well, I have nothing, I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 7, 2024, for special permit case ZSP 24-11-213, Little River Road.
I'll take a second.
This is the last one.
Anybody have a second?
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Last but not least, is review and approval of minutes of July 10. No.
August 7.
It's August 7, excuse me, review and approval of minutes of August 7, variance case ZAV 24-11, 5 Mary Ann Way, it's a continued case.
I make a motion we approve the minutes of.
August 7.
Of August 7, ZAV 24-11.
All I need is a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Is there any other business that we need to discuss, gentlemen? What's that? Request for counsel?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Oh, yeah, I missed that, but I mean.
All right, so gentlemen, I put together a letter, we have, we've been asked by the court to provide additional.
This is the one that you spoke to today, Mendez Montero.
Oh, that's what this is, okay. Oh, so this is a different one, fair enough. All right, but I'll just bring them up to speed because it's just general business. So I've put in a request to town administrator that we have counsel appointed to us to assist us in addressing the court's request that this board provide further findings on the matter for the.
Remind.
Old River Road.
No, Michael, this is.
I know what that is, I'm just saying that other one, I've done that already, I'm just giving them a general overview, no problem. So we've, I've done that, I've sent the letter out, I haven't received a response. Once I receive a response, and hopefully we'll have counsel, then at that point, we'll